Look like, I know each board member will be able to, you know, ask a question or two of the candidate, but are they doing another presentation? Or is it just going to be a Q and A session?
We do have a framework. I'll make sure that as Chair of the Search Committee, you have a copy of that. And we can move forward with the best recommendation for how to share this with all of the board members.
Okay, thank you.
This is John Paul. I just had a question. The final two candidates and then the interviews last week, I had a chance to watch them. I didn't see any of the other previous interviews. Are those available? Or are we privy to that information to get just more knowledge about the two candidates that we have coming before us?
I have not seen a recording of that first round of interviews. So I would have to find out if there is a recording on file. And I can follow up and make sure that you are aware of that. Also, it's probably a good idea to just pass on any particular questions that you may have to Dr. Guadalupe. So she can certainly make sure that there's a way for you to get any information that you need if the recording is not available.
Is Friday's recording available as well? I did watch that, but just in the event anybody else is interested in seeing it.
Christine, I don't think we recorded any of them, did we?
We did not record the interviews out of courtesy for our candidates. And we are only recording our committee of the whole meetings and our board meetings.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Edna, just, I guess your advice would be that no one should be soliciting information from public regarding the candidates, correct?
Oh, absolutely. No, definitely not. I think the recommendation, and I support this, is we do have a search committee. And I believe that if there's any particular questions that the board members want to know, it would be appropriate that the search committee be aware of that and that that be the source for collecting that information and those questions. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions that I can help you with? And thank you for the clarification on the recordings, by the way, Christine.
Well, thank you, Edna, for all of your help throughout this process. It's been very helpful having you and Blair and the other search team members. But particularly, your help along the way has been very, very nice. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Malkaya.
Before you go on, Judy, I don't know if you were going to say anything concerning it, but for the sake of the public, if they wanted to have comments about the CEO process, how should those be handled for the public? And I don't know who should take that question, but I just wanted some clarification because some issues have come up with that.
I think Malkaya is talking about some members of our community have offered their opinions on things. How should that be handled? I've asked the search committee to let me know when that happens and to not engage in any dialogue with those who want to put forth an opinion. But if there's another level of strategy, I'm open to it. And it's good to have it clear at this point in time.
Judy, it's Christine. We did, during the interview, we did make it available for people to submit public comment if they had questions and online only. We did not receive any on Friday. I'll go back and look and see if anyone added anything over the weekend. My plan was to pass that along to Edna if anyone did use those avenues put in place so that people could offer input and comment. But during the interviews on Friday, we didn't receive any.
Okay. Thank you for that information. I, my preference would be that don't ask, don't tell. That if people do get in touch with you, say thank you for your interest and kind of let it go at that. And certainly, don't go seeking information at this point in time regarding the candidates. This has been a search committee-driven process to date. And I think that's really where it ought to stay. I'm open to other feedback on that.
Well, Judy, this is Malkaya. I support what you're saying. And I just was hoping that we could make it clear to the public that as much as we entertain their thoughts and comments in this particular situation, it's not a regular meeting. So we wouldn't be proceeding like we do with normal committee of the whole or regular board meetings. So that's why I brought it up so that they would have a process. If they wanted to make a comment or wanted to say something, they would know how to do it. So that they're not reaching out to committee members or board members with their opinions or their questions.
Excellent point. I'm open to what the proper solution to that would be. I guess you can continue to include it as public comment. But I think that it's a fine line between the board being aware of it and not necessarily influenced. But once you're aware of it, it's hard to be unaware. So I think that at this point in time, there will be public comment if our, when we schedule the special board meeting for the final round. And that could be the opportunity. Those details are being worked through at the, at this point in time. But within the final round and the vote, there will be an opportunity for public comment at that meeting. That helps you at all?
Yeah, this is Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Because I was present with CMHA, I know a lot of people all over the state. And people that work for us and even that were previous CEOs had applied for positions elsewhere in the state. And often, I got calls from people from their PIHP board or the CMH board or whatever organization they had applied, asking me questions. And I always didn't, I always said that when somebody leaves us, we have a non-disclosure agreement. Like, I have to stop it. That's as far as I ever went. I never, like Judy wants us, if we get a call from somebody, she wants to know about it. But I never told anybody about it or gave out any information either. But I'm surprised nobody's called me on this yet.
Thank you.
This is Jonathan. I just wanted to ring in. Early on in the process, yes, I had been approached electronically from another CMH PIHP about things. But, and certainly, I brought that to the attention of the Chair. But in terms of people in general wanting to have public comment, I think we have all of our normal public meetings plus these special ones that we'll have. So, you know, we've never limited anyone to any specific topics or limited them to not talk about certain topics during public comment, even on, even at committee of the whole meetings such as today. So I think as long as we continue that openness, you know, for the public, I think we're, we're more than transparent. We're providing a rich set of opportunities.
Thank you. Malkaya, did your concern get addressed? I'm not sure.
Yes. I guess I was mainly wanting to bring out the fact that I had been contacted by a person in the community, an advocate. And I wanted to make sure that those who listen into our meetings or who might have a comment or suggestion or whatever, that they have some platform in which to know what to do with that. Because I'll be honest, I was a little surprised when I got the email. It wasn't expected. So I just want to make sure if there's someone in the audience that feels that they would like to weigh in on the search or the candidates or whatever, that they know what our process is so that they're not, you know, taking it back and we're not either. Because I was a little uncomfortable with, you know, that I was approached. It wasn't just me on that particular email. But still, I'm on the committee and I'm on the board. And I want to make sure that I handled the situation properly also. So that's why I wanted it to come forward for public discussion. But I did get my answer.
Okay. And as I mentioned, there will be an opportunity for public comment at the special board meeting when we do the final round of interviews and make the decision.
Judy, can I just jump in and add that we emailed out the link for public comment to roughly 1,100 people? And also, it is on our website. If people get any requests to do public comment, you can always direct them there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I thank everyone for their comments. I also agree that directing any individuals to the official channels for public comment would be the way to go here. And please let me know if you have any other questions. I am completing an email to Blair right now just to finalize the submission of the presentations and resumes to the full board.
Edna, I'm thinking that you might have a little bit more information you might want to share with her later in the meeting.
All right. I will leave it in drag mode, Judy.
Okay. We can do it once rather than twice. Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Edna. So we will now move on to our revenue update with Anya.
Okay. So the never-ending saga of fiscal year 20 revenue continues. The April payment did include roughly $2.5 million of retroactive funding for the rate adjustment. And so that's for $25 million across the state distribution. That is what I would expect for that particular rate adjustment. And then those, that rate adjustment will be in our capitation rates going forward. So in addition to that, as I mentioned, in June, we should be seeing the $2 an hour enhancement coming our way. And so from a cash flow perspective, that should be a decent chunk of money. The $2 enhancement is for a limited time period. So it won't be to the level we've seen before. But $2 is much higher than we have seen in the past. The other thing I wanted to note is, we talked a little bit about this before, but we are definitely seeing eligibility trends increase. At this point, both March and April and now even May are higher than we've seen in the last 18 months. And that is true for not only Tannenbaum and Healthy Michigan, but we're also seeing that for DAB as well. So if you guys recall from my presentation during the board onboarding, DAB is where we get the majority of our money. It is the highest rate we receive for individuals. So the DAB eligibility count really has a material impact on our revenue. So while the economy isn't, isn't in particularly great shape, it does help our revenue situation. So we are continuing to see that go up and we'll be monitoring that closely. And that will help out from a revenue perspective for the remainder of this fiscal year and likely beyond. I think that was all I want to mention. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention was that, as I mentioned before, the HAB waiver is still in an ongoing struggle. One of my staff did send in to the department last week the outstanding HAB waiver payments, what specifically ones we are still missing and still working to get that worked out. The state's trying. It's just a slow process, unfortunately. Malkaya has asked what's DAB. It's the, it's an eligibility category of our capitation funding. It stands for disabled, aged, and blind and is one of the primary funding streams that we get from Medicaid. So with that, I will take any questions anyone has. It looks like Jonathan says, does this mean retro payments is roughly $400,000 a month? Depends on what we're talking about. Specifically, Jonathan, I'm not sure what you're asking. If you want to unmute and clarify for me.
Sure. I thought, and maybe it was my misunderstanding more than a few months ago, that we were looking for, we, I thought we were going to receive a $25 million payment.
I wish.
Because that seemed to be about, I don't know, that, that's, that was actually 10% of our budget with that. But so it's, but we got a retro payment, you said, of $2.5 million roughly, right?
Yep.
So that's six months.
Just to clarify, the 25 million is what was distributed across the entire state. The 10% you're referring to is roughly our share of the entire state revenue. So when they, when they push out 25 million, we can typically expect roughly 9.6% of that money is usually how it plays out. So that's why 2.5 million was really almost exactly what I was expecting.
Okay. Because I know that we had built a budget around of a 5% increase from last year, year over year. And I thought that you had said, it looked like we were going to end up with roughly a 7% increase. And I was trying to do that, that math, and I probably got the decimal places mixed up.
And I wish it was simple enough for me to explain it easily. But unfortunately, it is not. One of the things I think we're going to start to do, and we talked about this this morning, is try to come up with a dashboard that the board and the public would be able to see that takes the average capitation payment for each eligible and then projects our estimated revenue. Because, you know, we don't actually get paid until the last week of the month. And so hopefully, to help you guys have a better grasp on kind of what we're expecting. And it helps you get an understanding of kind of how I just do quick math in my head when I look at some of this stuff. But the retro eligibility piece specifically is very different in this year than it has been in the last few years, just that it goes back all the way six months. So historically, the last probably five years that I can remember, it's only gone back one month. So that just takes time to process. So we are definitely seeing additional payments, retro payments each month. And it's typically, we get the most the next month. But, and then it trickles off as we, as we go on. But we're definitely seeing it different. And that does help us in the long run because it doesn't use the actuary's estimate of retro payments. It uses the reality of six months' worth of retro payments. So that does come into play. I think that with the eligibility trend and eventually getting all of this HAB waiver revenue, we should be in the ballpark of 7% if I were guessing. You know, the 7% came from the document from the actuary. It was 7.2% that they had said our revenue would go up. So that's really where that came from. We went with 5% because that was a conservative estimate on 7. So my hope again is always that it's more. But we tend to budget pretty conservatively as a general rule. And then eligibility trends, depending on how much it impacts revenue going forward for the remainder of the year, it could potentially be higher than that.
Right. And if I remember correctly, we went ahead with our budget even before the state had approved theirs or determined what the rates were going to be. So it was a crapshoot that we did, and we, we came out even.
Yeah, essentially, it is every year. I mean, this is just the way this process works. Most of the time, we do not have actual rates when we have to put our budget together. Typically, they don't come in until after that. And so it's basically making guestimates of what, what they're doing with rates and what the eligibility trend will do. Because, as you know, that plays just as much of an impact as does the actual rate itself. So given that we're now in an economic downturn, that's going to go to our favor. So, you know, it's, a lot of it's just a rough guess, quite honestly.
You're right that, you're right that county Medicaid, the eligibles, will be in our favor for the next year or two. But it's, if you will, it's seasonality because of the economy. And it's going to turn back around as things spin up. And then maybe next year, it might, it may be back to where we were headed going into this year. The other piece of that is, if the state has a shortfall in their tax revenues, they're going to be looking for ways to make cuts too. I think there's already been discussion, not on the things that they've been funding us for, but for other ones because they're facing a huge shortfall.
Yep. That's definitely going to come into play on where they're going to make up the difference because they have to have a balanced budget.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Dr. Hans has asked a couple of questions. So one of them was related to the HAB waiver payments. Unfortunately, it's just a glitch in the CHAMP system that the state uses that started at the beginning of the fiscal year and has yet to be fully, fully rectified. We continue to work at it, as do the rest of the PIHPs. We have about 100, I'm going to call them slots because I don't know what else to call them, a month that we are not getting paid for. We also have a situation now where some people, excuse me, are no longer qualifying for the HAB services waiver due to some changes in how the eligibility criteria has changed. So it's, you know, we continue to work with them to get that, get that figured out. But we'll be updating the accruals in financials and making sure that it's giving you the best representation of the money we should end up with. And as far as a timeframe goes, you know, I would hope it was yesterday. I don't know. My hope is by the end of the fiscal year. I can't really tell you. The good thing with HAB waiver is it's very specific numbers for a very specific set of people. So we can estimate pretty well of what that revenue looks like. So it's not as much, and it's based on people we always are serving. So it's not as, as difficult to project what that revenue will look like once it is correctly fixed in their system. So I see that Pat's got a question. I would like to see a plan that shows how we expect to receive revenues to hit our budget levels. When is break even since we are under budget now in revenues? So I just talked about that. So I'm not entirely sure what you'd like to see differently, Pat. But the way our revenue works is a little different than a typical organization. We don't get to really control how we receive revenue or how much is received. It's really all totally dependent on the rates that the actuaries determine, eligibility trends, and those types of things. We don't actually have any control over it. So I'm not sure what you'd like to see other than what we're already doing. So certainly, if you'd like to, you'd like to clarify, we can talk about that later. Or if you want to hop on now and clarify, you can just let me know.
Yeah, I hopped on. So it seems a little bit like we're grabbing a greased pig. You know, and I don't mean that in a pejorative way. It's just, you know, we, you know, I've been here four months now and we hear the same thing every month that the state, you know, doesn't know, you know, they have problems with their processes, they have problems with their systems. And, you know, they're not sure how they're going to do it and all that sort of thing. Okay. So how the heck do we run, run the business? You know, we, you know, we put in, before my time, you know, a 7% increase in budget, which is great, in revenues this year. Obviously, bad things have happened with COVID-19 and some other things. We have, I know we're, we're paying back to the state the overestimate of, I guess you call it capitation rates or whatever, people. I think it was about $3 million. They're starting to take some from us each month. So that's less revenues net-net. And so how, you know, how, how do we look at our business if we're, if we're having revenues that we really can't project? You know, if we can't say, okay, by August, we ought to be there. Or by October, we ought to be there. Or maybe by June, we'll be there. I just, you know, I'm, to me, I would love to see it just kind of laid out, understanding. You know, you could almost do a scenario, an A, B, C scenario, where B hopefully is the most competent part. But it's a, at this point, it looks like we'd get it if we got X, Y, and Z. Or A would be best case, and that would be here. And C would be worst case that, you know, the state, because they have to balance their budget, we might take a whack here later this summer or whatever. It's, you know, we're in May and it's, I think it's time to start, you know, throwing some darts against the wall and saying, where are we? You know, rather than keep pushing it, saying, well, the state will get it to us when they can get it to us. Well, that's, that's not good enough. I mean, that from you, you know, is, you know, maybe it's something we have to do, you know.
So I can answer that. You know, I've been here over 20 years, and this is just really the nature of the beast. This is how Medicaid funding works in a managed care organization. And unfortunately, we do our best to project based on the information we know, and then we monitor it. And I would advise you to look at our financials. It's really the best estimate of where we intend to be. We use accrual-based accounting for that reason. We don't, we don't function on a cash basis. So you could have a good understanding of what we're doing. Right now, they're not taking back the proportional amounts of the death recruitment because of these payment issues. But I can tell you, and for those board members who have been on this board for a long period of time, this really just is what it is. As much as we would like to be able to have it a more standard, more predictable process, that's part of the managed care risk that we manage is this, is, is how much revenue? Because revenue is based on things that are not concrete and that change every day. And unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast. And, and we've done historically some things where we project out two and three years. But quite honestly, they're total guesses, and we don't know what's going to happen next year. We do our best to mitigate any risk we can. We're required to do a risk plan every year. But the reality is, it's, it's part of our risk obligation is to manage the uncertainty. And that's just, just part of the job. Unfortunately, I don't know any other way to make that any more secure or predictable. But it's been this way for 20 years.
Yeah, I can try to ring in on that too. And, you know, I've seen it doing that for eight years. And I know Steve has been on the board and Malkaya for longer than I have, along with Judy. If that is the nature of the beast, enrollments go up and down. Number, number of people that are eligibles goes up and down. What the state decides to pay us goes up and down, even though they've set up or assigned rates to us. Sometimes in the beginning of the year, sometimes later on in the year, sometimes making it retroactive. As Anya has said, usually, it's retroactive to last month. They've not been gracious enough to, to try to give us monies back to the beginning of the fiscal year. But in this case, they did. Now they're probably wishing they hadn't. It is, it is interesting because we have to maintain a certain amount of, not just reserves, but, you know, operating cash, just like any other business. Because in a way, we are, we are a business from that standpoint. So we have to have cash on hand to pay our, the people that provide direct care services and supports as well as all of this. Did I get it right, Anya?
Yep, you did.
Okay.
Thank you for helping clarify.
I mean, I think if you were looking forward, you know, two or three years, that's a waste of time based on what you're saying. Yeah, I wouldn't even do it. It was just, got the next month, two or three.
We actually do some.
Next two or three months and seeing where we're at, you know, and seeing what we need to do. Because, you know, do we need to cut? You know, what do we need to do to get our, to get our finances in order? Because we can't, you know, can't bank it on the state of what they're going to do. You know, they're, to me, again, it's like kind of the slippery pig thing.
Jonathan, did you have something else to add?
Well, I was going to say, but I shouldn't talk for you, that you do play the games of what-ifs for at least the short term. For the long term, Pat, you are right. It's, we can guess where we'd like to be. We can guess that, that the revenue numbers or the, not revenue numbers, the number of eligibles go down, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's not a leading, it's a lagging indicator. As the economy gets better, it goes down faster than when the economy gets worse. Then it takes longer for it to come up. So yes, it is a very hard game.
So that's correct, Jonathan. The other thing I would say, Pat, is that's really what we use the budget for. The budget is intended to represent our best guess at this point, and we do modify it throughout the year. I do plan to bring a budget amendment to the board for the, I believe it's the May, no, it can't be the May board meeting. It must be the June board meeting. So that will have our updated revenue projections, expense projections, and those types of things. Because that's really how we project out from a few months at a time. And that's how we, we adjust our expectations based on what's actually happening in the year we're experiencing it. Because that's about the best we can do.
Okay, thanks. I will add one other item to it. We now report year over year of actuals. So, because when we do a budget amendment, the numbers fall, it makes the budget and the actual sort of fall back in line. So you lose visibility as to how do we look like compared to last year? So we now report on that. And so we can see just how crazy things go up and down year over year. Okay?
Yeah, some of our dashboards will also help. You have a little more insight into how our revenue works that we intend to put on the website. So some of those things will help. I also plan to share for Friday, I guess I'm not sure we're doing one for this Friday. We can probably share it anyway. But the eligibility trend that we're seeing that definitely that definitely has a great impact on, on our revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it for me, unless anybody else has other questions.
Thank you, Anya. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to building update with Patrick.
I'm starting out with the building update. Good afternoon. I wanted to start out by saying that effective May 7, the lift was taken off of the, the ban was lifted off of the construction work, and Friedman Construction has already obtained the build-out permit from the city of Troy. We're waiting for bid documents from Friedman to satisfy our procurement policy before any work begins. We, after the procurement requirement is satisfied, then we'll start build-out to begin on the ACHC, which is a 6,800 square feet space. I mentioned ACH's name because we have a signed lease and we're ready to move forward with the build-out for that particular agreement. The building is, this is a 15-year lease agreement, and it's, they're expected for a move-in date of October 1st of 2020. We're still waiting for a signed lease from tenant number two, and obviously I didn't mention their name because we don't have a signed lease yet. Due to COVID-19, it appears that we've had some negotiations with them because their senior leadership is requesting more closed space. Based on this COVID, they, they felt it was necessary to have more closed spaces. So they were looking to delay, delayed the process as a result of it. However, the deal is still continuing to move forward as projected, and we're hoping to have a signed lease by Friday of this week. It's a seven-year deal. They actually asked for seven and a half year at least, and with a move-in date of September 1 of 2020. Our new broker, Mason Capitani, is working on a marketing plans right now to lease our remaining 2,200 square feet. As I was on this call, he called me and just let me know they're coming to install the sign tomorrow. So they'll have a V-shaped sign off of Crooks, not Crooks, but Corporate Drive Marketing, our property, along with their plan. So we'll be revisiting that with them real soon. So those were some of the building updates. We did have some capital improvements that we wanted to mention. We're in the process of scheduling dates to complete Phase 2 of our parking lot. The timeline is probably around the end of May, or probably the first week in June, according to ASI, which is our contractor for the parking lot. Hopefully, they'll have that done early in June. The next item for capital improvement is the HVAC controls upgrade. It's requiring a repair and startup, and it's to re, and also to refill the compressors with Freon for the summer season. We've got an added benefit from this update because it was something that the controls could not longer be repaired, and so it had to be replaced. And so as a result of that, the new system will allow our contractor to view our system from home or from a virtual site without coming out to troubleshoot on-site. And so that's what we're doing with our HVAC upgrade. Also, we're upgrading the parking lot lighting from HID to LED. This, with the rebate that we received and the reduction in lighting cost, this was kind of a cost-neutral project, and we'll break even after one year because we're going to save the maintenance and bulb replacement costs, because the LED lights last about six times longer than the regular LID that we currently have. Then the third, the fourth thing is the ACH build-out, which we already mentioned, and they're going to start that hopefully sometime this month. And so those are the updates I have for the building update. Also, I did want to mention about the building, Oakland County is requesting to have the bonds for the RCC building refunded or refinanced. And this is for the RCC building. We looked at the numbers, and actually, it's something that benefits us. We're going to be saving to the tune of about $450,000 over the life of this bond. So it's an action item that's going to probably be presented for next board meeting that Oakland County is the holder of the bonds, but we sub-lease, and we'll be saving about $45,000 annually until the maturity date of September 1, 2029. They did not extend the life of the loan during this process or the bond. They did not extend the life of the bond, and it actually reduced our payment, bond payment annually by about $45,000. So that's my update for the building. Are there any questions, if you have any?
Patrick, Jonathan does have a question in there about how much will the HVAC controls cost and LED parking lot?
The HVAC controls is $70,000. That includes everything that they're doing, not just the control update, but it's also repairs and startup for their season. And then they had to refill the compressors with Freon. We had it pulled out during the winter because there was a leak somewhere that we, and we didn't want to lose all the Freon we had. So we pulled it all out, and they had to refill the system come, come summer, come this now. And so everything total was $70,000. And then the other one, the other request was the parking lot lighting is $25,000. But we got a rebate from DTE, I believe, that was probably about $12,000 in rebate. And we also looked at the lighting cost savings, and, you know, just in bulb replacement alone, we'll, we'll break even from that within one year. And, you know, the bulbs last six times longer. So for the long haul, it's the best thing to do for $25,000 light replacement.
I had one other question, if that's okay. You were talking about the bond. Did I understand that we're going to re, we're going to redo the bond, so it'll be at a lower rate? Is it going to be for another 20-year duration, or will it only be for like 15 or 12, whatever, whatever is remaining on the life?
It's just whatever's remaining. And, you know, the county owned the bonds. They're doing the bond refinance for all of their building bonds. So we're a portion of that configure, that total. And because we're going to benefit, because we are part of the bond renewal, it's saving us money. So it's really a, an easy decision for us to approve it because we're saving money and it didn't increase the life of the bond.
Okay. At the end of this, all we've done is paid for all the improvements. They still own that building, don't they?
That's correct.
Bummer.
So I had a question, too. Hi. First, I wanted to say thank you so much. It's really great that you were able to put together the building, you know, committee information. I still feel that we, and we've talked a little bit about this, just regarding capital improvements on the building and where the funding is coming to do these things, maybe from the, you know, the, we just need a committee, I feel, or, or at least a document that explains funding for capital improvement every six months, how much it'll be, and also, you know, where the funds are coming. It's just something that we've talked a little bit about, and I still suggest that this should be something reviewed by a capital needs group.
So, Hadass, just to clarify, I believe we have provided the capital improvements plan and budget. And just for your information, that, those things are capitalized, so it is, while it is a cash outlay, we don't expense the full $70,000 or $25,000, for that matter, in one single year. And one of the things we are planning to do is to go through in detail, line by line, in the budget upcoming study session. So we'll have a little more detail for budget for the 2021 budget, but I believe we, we produced the capital improvement budget for the board a couple months ago, and that included all of this. Is there something different you would like?
Well, I just didn't remember. I don't, I guess I don't have it in my hands, so that's what made me realize it. I definitely remember Phase 1 parking lot numbers. I don't remember seeing the Phase 2 and all that, but I guess, you know, I'll go review my notes.
Yeah, Patrick can ship it over to you again. But I, I believe I sat up there with Patrick when we went over it. So I think we went, I think we did, unless I'm making that up, which.
Yeah, well, capital improvements will constantly change. That's, that's part of it.
Right. And we're bringing those every month to the board meetings. We're bringing, with the building updates, includes any capital improvement updates. So that's part of the building update we're doing every month at the, the board meetings.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right. Are there any other questions for Patrick? All right. Thank you, Patrick. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And now we are going to move on to the fiscal year 20 performance indicators with John and Wendy.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Beeschiller. I'm the manager of Quality Improvement, and I'm here today with John Buffitis. He's the quality analyst team. And John works with the providers on a regular basis to prepare the performance indicators to send to the HHS each quarter. The performance indicators are state-defined measures aimed at improving access to services and improving the quality of care. And they also establish benchmarks for all of the indicators for all of the PIHPs. So with the exception of one indicator, all of the indicators have a benchmark of 95% or better, and the rate of recidivism should be 15% or below. So John is going to discuss today the results of the performance indicator for quarter 1, and that spans the time of October 1 of 2019 through December 31 of 2019. And in quarter 1, there were two indicators in which, as a network, OCHN did not meet the standard. So I'll turn it over to John, and he will give you more detail about that.
Thank you for that introduction, Wendy. As she said, my name is John Buffitis. I am a quality analyst here at OCHN, and one of my main functions is to monitor, analyze, and track all the performance indicators. So they delineate the dimensions of quality that are addressed by the public mental health system, and we really measure for access, efficiency, and overall timing of how fast people can get into the system and get into the network. And the HHS mandates that we measure these and report them at the end of each quarter. So what we're going to be looking at in the next few slides, I'm going to go over each indicator. I'm going to talk about what it's measuring, and I'm going to show you how the data has been trending over the last five quarters. So, so this is the first indicator. This one is the number one. It's called timeliness inpatient screening. It's the percentage of emergency referrals that are completed in 180 minutes or less. So what that means is, when an individual walks into our CRU, our crisis residential unit, they have 180 minutes from the time they come in the door to have a decision of whether or not they should be hospitalized or not. So when they come in the door, it has to be within 180 minutes. So as you can see, at the very right, we measure two populations. The blue line is adults, and the children is the orange one. And the compliance standard, as Wendy mentioned, was 95%. So as you can see, the rightmost quarter 1, that ended in December 31, the children measure was about 96%, and the adult one fell below the 95% compliance standard. It's about 91%. So that was trending downward a little bit in quarter 1. So we are currently working with the CRU, the crisis residential unit. We are drafting a performance improvement plan to try to address some of the issues, staffing, scheduling, things like that, to help improve that measure going forward. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the second performance indicator that we look at. This one is number two. It's the timeliness. It's days from the first request of services to the intake assessment. So when someone reaches out to our access department and asks for non-emergent services, they need to be seen for an intake appointment within 14 days of that initial call. That is what the state mandates that we do. And we measure this for different populations instead of two. The children and the adults are divided into two different populations. Children with SED, which is Serious Emotional Disturbance, and it should say ADD, Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. So as you can see, there's different colors for each one. And then adults with mental illness, and then adults with ADD as well. And as you can see, as we go over to quarter 1, they've been in compliance for the last couple quarters. If you're noticing that little downtick from quarter 2 with the green, which was the children with ADD, because that population is very small, if there is one appointment that is a little delayed, or if there's one little mistake like that, it can bring the entire compliance standard down. So that's why that one dropped. But for the most part, that's been doing really well lately. So, okay, the next slide. This is number three indicator that we look at. This is the timeliness, days from the assessment to the first received service. So this one measures when that individual gets that intake, then 14 days, they have to have their first service done within them. And you can't see actually all the lines here because they're pretty much all 100%. They're under that yellow line. So this indicator has been really good, and it's almost always 100%. So as you can see, all of them did 100% this past quarter. So that's good news. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this one is number 4A. This is continuity of care. This is follow-up after hospital discharge. So when an individual is in a psychiatric unit, an inpatient unit, when they are discharged, they need to be seen for follow-up care within seven days of their discharge date. So it can be, usually it's much sooner than that, but the state mandates that it has to be within seven days. And we divide this up into two populations. This one is on children's and adults. And as you can see, the most recent quarter, adults has trended downward a little bit. It's about 91% roughly, while children is still above that compliance standard. When the providers that we contract with fall below that 95%, we will issue performance improvement plans that try to rectify and try to bring the numbers back up. One of the examples that we got of this quarter was the supervisors are going to implement hospitalization as a standing agenda item on their team meetings, and they're going to monitor hospitalization discharge dates and follow-up appointments. And they also said that the front desk staff will be directing to offer telehealth appointments. When hospitalization reports show individuals discharged from the psychiatric patient unit will be seen by the CPA within seven days. So those are things that we're going to work with one of the providers to try to bring that standard back up into compliance, above 95%. And this is the final one. As Wendy mentioned, this is hospital recidivism. This one's measured a little bit differently. The others have a 95% compliance standard. This one is 15% or below. Inpatient recidivism refers to when an individual is discharged from the hospital, if they are readmitted within 30 days. Obviously, we want this to be low. We don't want people going back into the hospital. So this is measured the same way as the last one, 4A. It's two populations. And as you can see, both of them are below 15%. Children was a slight uptick to about, just below 12%, I believe. And adults is about 10% for this last quarter. But they're both definitely well below the 15% compliance standard, which is good news. Okay, thank you. So indicators 1 and 4A saw a decline, or they worsened a little bit, from the quarter 4, which ended in September 30, to quarter 1, as Wendy mentioned, was at the end of last year, December 31. While indicators 2 and 3 improved. And hospital recidivism, as I mentioned, was kind of a mixed bag. The adult population improved a little bit. The children got a little bit worse, but they're both still in compliance. And as I mentioned previously, when certain providers do not hit those 95% standards or the 15% and below, we issue performance improvement plans that help highlight the areas that need to be worked on in deploying intervention. help highlight the areas that need to be worked on in deploying interventions that can help to bring those standards back up into compliance. So we work with the service network team on a daily basis to communicate with the providers, and we try to just achieve compliance for every population going forward. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
I had a question. I'm sorry. I was trying to type and didn't get it in, John. This is Malkaya. On that one slide for the hospitalization numbers in the first quarter, slide four A, I believe, was there any reason given for why the, the providers were having difficulty with the numbers in that quarter? It was the one before that. No, that's the right one, four A, yeah. The adults were low.
Sure. A couple of the reasons that this can be below the compliance standard, or it's a little bit harder, is scheduling and staffing is one of the reasons. When someone is discharged, getting them an appointment quickly can be sometimes harder, depending on the staff availability and the scheduling. And another issue, I mean, that's one of the main ones, and I think what we look at is we're trying to get them in quickly. Sometimes there can be a slight miscommunication between the hospital and the provider that they're aligned with. So it can be sometimes miscommunication between the providers, the hospitals, and us. There's a lot of communication that has to happen for the appointment to be scheduled, but a lot of times, it can be staffing shortages and scheduling and getting them quickly. Sometimes there's just no slots available, which is something that we're constantly striving to improve.
You, you may not be, you, I'm sorry. I just had a follow-up question. John, you may not be the person to ask, but how cooperative are the hospitals with working with us, you know, with, with this just discharge protocol? Because it's really important that people get into service once they get out of the hospital.
No, definitely. I think that, from my personal experience, I don't deal with the hospitals as much as other staff, but they are usually extremely good with communication and aligning the people that are taken into the hospital with the core providers that we contract with. So we send someone out from the core provider to meet with them before they're discharged and schedule an appointment within those certain amount of days, and say, okay, you're going to be out on this day, we're going to meet with you three days later, or five days later, or two days later. So from what I've seen, usually communication is excellent, so. Did I hear, I think I heard another question, possibly?
Yes, this is Bijaya Hans. My question is this, usually when the patients are hospitalized, our discharge plan is started right away, so it would be important for the, the network to be in communication with the hospital to make sure that they have the date of discharge, and if the patient is discharged on that day, there can automatically be an appointment set up in, for example. So maybe if that is something that we can look at, how well that's working or not working may be helpful.
No, that's a good point. I think that having that discharge plan started very early, before they are discharged, and making sure that everything is set up before they walk out the door of the hospital, that is always key, because if it waits until after they leave, sometimes people don't answer their phones, or they miss the phone call. So having that in place before they leave is actually really important for timeliness and getting people into the.
Well, my point is this, that that process should be started as soon after the patient is hospitalized, not planning after the hospitalization, because a discharge planning is usually started within forty-eight hours of admission.
Right, right. And I'm not a hundred percent clear on when the timelines start, but I do know, because I do go through a lot of those types of notes and things, and I read from the hospitals, that those things do start very early. Days before they're discharged, they're already aligned with the provider, and usually appointments are scheduled days before they are discharged, not until they're out. So I'd say most of the time, almost all the time, they are aligned well before, and those appointments are set up two, three days beforehand, so.
John and Dr. Hans, I can provide just a little insight on that, too. So all of our protocols state that discharge planning, when someone goes into the hospital, does start at admission, for the very reasons that you stated, Dr. Hans, and then our entitled, our entire utilization review team that follows that person and follows that stay while they're in the hospital is the facilitator of communication, and makes sure that the person is aligned with the core provider, helps to facilitate any issues if a core provider has getting into a hospital, or conversely, if we get any feedback that a hospital has difficulty communicating with one of our core providers. So we have a, a team for you, our folks, who manage all of those stays and facilitate that on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I do see a question from Judith. I want to read. It's, when a plan of correction is necessary, does OCHN set the criteria, or is that left through the provider? That's a great question. What we do is we draft up a performance improvement plan, and we send it to that provider, and the provider will put down areas that they think that they can improve, and they will send it back to us. And then we work in the quality department with the service network team, and we make sure that it addresses the necessary areas before we approve it and put it into action. There are times that we will get one. We don't necessarily think it's sufficient. We will send it back with our notes, saying this is what we think this should be, you know, addressing, and we kind of work together to make sure that it is addressing the areas.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. So I think that we hold the last card in that hand in terms of whether or not the plan of correction meets the standards that you were shooting for?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes. No problem. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, John. I think that was very enough, very informative and comprehensive. We appreciate the time and explanation. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we will now move on to training team overview with Tricia.
All right. Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yep. Hi.
All right, good. All right, so we will get started. This is going to be the monthly or bimonthly overview of each department, so I get to go first. So my name is Tricia Zizumbo. I'm the director of training. I have been here with OCHN since October of 2018, and that's when we created the training department. So this is where I fall within our leadership organizational chart. I report up to Nicole, but I do get to work with every single department here. So if we go to the next slide, this is our training team. I have a team of five. The top line will be all my full-time staff, and then I do have two part-time staff as well. So the next one. So this is the overview that we gave at the board member onboarding, so it just kind of gives you a short synopsis of what the training department is, that we do provide the training and education for our network, for our staff, for the individuals that we serve, and for community members as well. We can move on to the next one. So these training department goals are goals that I utilize to guide the training department. So as we look at what trainings we are going to hold, we are going to host, we want to bring in, these are the goals that, that kind of drive me. Definitely, we have a big focus on evaluation and assessment, so we don't like to just hold trainings just to hold trainings. We really want to ensure that we're assessing our target population for capacity and for need, and then also evaluating both the process and the outcome to ensure that we're providing effective curriculum. We want to be able to provide an environment for learning and ensure that we're utilizing different learning modalities so that we reach the most people. Next slide. So the annual and strategic plan goals that are assigned to me, the first one is going to be the person-centered planning, family-centered planning goal. I work very closely with the clinical team and with Stephanie Wilson on this goal. We have just completed our needs assessment for the person-centered planning training curriculum. We are starting with the curriculum for supports coordinators, case managers, and therapists. Now that we are analyzing that data right now, we are going to provide a framework of a training. Pre-COVID, we were going to pull together a diverse committee that would meet regularly. We still are going to pull together that diverse committee of individuals that we serve, families and advocates, and our providers, but we'll do that in a virtual format, and we will take to them the framework that we have created from best practices and from our needs assessment to get their buy-in and get their input and feedback on what would be the best approach on providing this training. Once we do complete that for our provider network, we will then move on to enhancing and expanding the person-centered planning training that we do for the individuals that we serve and for their family and advocates. The next goal that I oversee is our cultural competence services, and this has two objectives within that goal. The first objective is military and veteran families, so that is with Chaka McDonald and Megan Phillips. I work very closely with them, and assisting them in anything that they need, but Chaka really takes this objective and runs with it. The second one is to implement our OCHN five-year cultural competency work plan. So I did overtake that work plan in the beginning of 2019, when there were some staffing changes. And so, again, we brought back together that committee. We did an initial training so that all of our leadership and then all the staff that volunteered to be on that committee, so about fifty people, received a training with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, so that we all kind of began our process on the same page. Once we did that initial training, we started an organizational assessment. We have just recently finished that assessment of going through all of our policies, kind of procedures, our practices within our own organization, and looking at them through a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. So right now, I'm analyzing that data as well, so that we can then come back to our leadership with recommendations of how we want to move forward with that. And I have another slide later in the presentation that goes a little bit more into our diversity and cultural competency initiatives. The next, this is how the training department is funded. So during the new board member onboarding, there's slides where we talk about what is a PIHP function versus what is our CMHP, CMHSP function. So the training department lies within that CMH function. We also are funded by different grants, so not any grants that my department has gotten, but grants that possibly other departments have gotten that require training. So we'll work very closely with, say, clinical when they have their grant for suicide prevention training, or if the SUD department had a grant and it had a training component, that's when we get to work together and pull that in. So my primary roles and responsibilities are network train, community, overseeing our direct support professional training contracts, working with our HR and our staff on workforce and development, and then also our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. So first, for network trainings, these are trainings that we provide to our providers and to the individuals that we serve. These are trainings that are required by licensure, so social work credits, different trainings that are required by that license, trainings that we require within our contracts, so cultural, cultural competency, corporate compliance, those types of trainings. And it's also tied to funding, so LOCUS, DLA-20 training, education, and then also the benefit of the individuals that we serve. So we do a series of trainings called Living Hope Series, or different rep trainings that are for the individuals that we serve and for their family members and advocates. We are doing these no longer in person, but we're doing them all virtual, or we will be doing them all virtual, but in the past, we have done them in person, and we've been doing a lot of live webinars. These vary on when we have these. So I mentioned the DLA-20, that's a quarterly training. The LOCUS is a monthly training. The ethics training that we actually just held prior to working from home, we held for about eighty of our provider staff, and that's something that is required by social work license that is needed year, we'll be offering it yearly, but it's required for every three years of their license. So we perform this function both with our internal trainers, we bring in external trainers, and then also work with trainers throughout our network. Our community trainings are trainings for our community partners, general public, any special populations that we have, and we provide this on the mental health system. So we just finished up a four-series webinar for our criminal justice partners, our parole officers, our probation officers, our judges on understanding the mental health system. So we did a four-part webinar series for that. It is recorded on our website. We also do different trainings for our partners on engaging with the individuals that we serve, mental health, just general awareness, suicide prevention. These are happening in person and virtually, and again, we do these with internal, external, and then network trainers. So these would include our CIT training, which is a crisis intervention team training that we do in partnership with our justice, our justice team for law enforcement. This also includes trainings that we've done specifically for the Oakland County Bar Association, Mental Health First Aid, which we have a, we have trainers for both youth, older adult, general population, and veterans. This is our assist training, which is our applied suicide intervention strategies training, our SAFE Talk, which is another suicide prevention awareness training, or LEAP training, and then, you know, I mentioned our other webinars for our providers. So the next would be our direct support professional training contracts. So I oversee these contracts with both MERC and TTI, who provide our trainings for our direct support professionals. These are trainings that are required for all direct support professionals. They are being held virtually right now, so they are either through the MERC Cornerstone program, or TTI is utilizing Zoom to, to perform those trainings. These are varied. There are, all of them are required upon hire, and then as needed, or some of them are required yearly or every two to three years. So I referenced our quality 3.1 policy, which has a chart of when those trainings are required by our direct support professionals. So I work very closely with MERC and TTI. We review their budgets, and we meet frequently to discuss best practices, how I can support them in providing these trainings. I participate in our state training guidelines work group at the state level, which pulls together all the different PIHPs and CMHs, their, their training leads, so my counterparts from across the state, so that we all can work towards statewide reciprocity with these trainings. Next slide. So workforce development is the training and development of our own workforce. So as soon as I got here, I did do an assessment of the staff to see what their training needs were. This is, I feel very fundamental in, in any workplace, and ensuring that, one, there's trainings that we have to provide and we have to do with staff so that we're compliant with our contracts, but there's also trainings that we want to ensure that our staff are being able to increase their knowledge and leadership trainings and, and management trainings, so that they can continue to grow and improve in their position and hopefully being able to move up in the company. We utilize, rely on a management system internally, but we also provide in-person trainings. We do some virtual webinars. We call them our IT power hours. We go over different technology trainings. I work very closely with, with the HR department, IT, but we've also brought in both internal and external trainers for our staff. We've been offering more continuing education credits, not, again, not just for our staff but our providers as well, and looking at how we can continue to help them meet their requirements to licensure, but also so that, again, they just continue to grow. And then lastly, our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. So these So these are strategic annual plan goals, and we do have a cultural competency work plan, which we're looking at updating right now. We're re-engaging staff in these efforts. So this, again, was started prior to me coming on board, but just kind of reinvigorating it and bringing staff together. Once we kind of have our internal process done and we have our assessment done and we can look at having our own plan, we will be creating a network of, a network within our providers of all the diversity leads so that we can share best practices, so that we can, we can set some different training standards for that. I did apply for a grant that, fingers crossed, I hear back from this month, so that we can have some funds to do some Train the Trainers for the diversity leads at our provider network. I did send out an assessment, so I was able to gather some of that information. So looking at our providers and who is it at each of those providers that is working on diversity, and how do we create that council so that we're all sharing best practices, utilizing the resources that we have. Our internal committee is, again, completing that organizational assessment, doing a deeper dive into racial equity as well, looking at those Train the Trainer curriculums. We've created a diversity calendar, so different ways that we're keeping our staff educated and updated on different, different topics. So that just started this month. I was planning on hopefully hiring a co-op student who was going to be taking some of this over, but maybe that'll be post-COVID that I'll be able to get that, that student to be able to do that. So my staff and I are working through some of those to-dos right now, looking at bringing in trainings, hopefully when, either virtually or when we can get back together on implicit bias and unconscious bias, microaggressions, health disparities. So really looking at focusing on educating our staff and our network on these issues. Makai, I see you have a question on the board's role. I really hope that you guys will be involved in these trainings. I know that both our board chair and co-chair were invited to our initial training in December so that we could all go through that Department of Civil Rights training together. So there is some portions within the assessment that do ask about the board and the makeup and the diversity of the board. And ultimately, you know, that doesn't fall with OCHN, that does fall with the county commissioners as well. So I definitely see that there's going to be a lot of opportunity for the board to be involved in these trainings. And I'm hoping to present to you as well, when we finish updating and analyzing the data, what the assessment looks like, what are our, what are our committee recommendations going to be for ensuring that, that we become more diverse and equitable and inclusive at OCHN. And see if I can see Eric's question on SUD train for law enforcement. So there is a portion on substance use disorder within that CIT training for law enforcement. We do offer through communications and through SUD, a lot of different education for law enforcement. Some of it is particular to SUD, but if you're specifically, I think, asking about the law enforcement, there is a whole section on the substance use disorder within that CIT training for that. The next slide. So I wanted to provide you with some data. I'm a big fan of infographics. And so these are data stats from 2019. So this is the calendar year. And we provided 135 trainings, and this, to be honest, is not all-inclusive because there are some trainings that are held in other departments that sometimes don't get funneled through to training, so I don't capture all of that. I'm working hard on that. So we trained almost 5,000 people, which gives us an average of 35 people per training. And we offered 40 trainings that offered CEUs, social work CEUs, which came out to 125 CEUs that we did. So next slide. So the way the training department impacts the people that we serve, we work to increase and expand their knowledge. We give them opportunities to come and learn and socialize and, and be able to provide their voice and their feedback. It also provides us with the ability to learn from the individuals that we serve. My team is made up of clinical staff, individuals with lived experience. And so being able to pull from their expertise and, and their life really, really impacts what we can do and what we can provide. Sometimes we try to make sure that we have both a clinical individual and an individual with lived experience doing the training together so that we kind of get both sides. And that seems to have the biggest impact. The, our impact on the service network, of course, is really focused on compliance and licensure and ensuring that the providers have a list of trainings that they need to do in order to be compliant with their contract with us, but then also so that we're compliant with our contracts. We provide continuing education credits, being able to provide best practices and sharing of resources, streamlining the trainings and making best use of our funds, since we're all trying to do a little bit more with a little bit less. Our community impact, we are the local authority on behavioral health, on mental health, on substance use disorder. Prior to my coming to OCHN, I was with Oakland County Health Division for 12 years and worked very closely with OCHN on substance use disorder, mental health awareness, suicide prevention. And really, OCHN is that local authority. So being able to provide these training and education, we're looked upon by our community partners and by organizations as, as the organization to have that. So really connecting with our partners and being able to reach out and increase that community partnership that, that we do. Our system impact statewide, I mentioned earlier that I do participate in the State Training Guidelines Work Group, and we are working towards statewide reciprocity, which means when we have a direct support professional who gets trained in another county and they come here to Oakland County, that we can accept that training, that, that we are all vetted against the same standards and we're able to not require that direct support professional to have to take another two weeks of training all over again. So we definitely are working hard towards that. We do have a signed MOU by all the PIHP directors, and I have providers that contact me when they get a direct support professional that has received training in another county. I'm able to reach out to that county and talk to my counterpart there. I talk very frequently with our, our local PIHPs here, with McComb and Detroit Wayne, on training and being able to accept each other's training so that we're not requiring our DSPs, we're not providing any additional barriers to individuals becoming direct support professionals as well. So we are working hard on vetting those materials. Both Mork and TTI are vetting their training materials, and they will then turn that into me so that we can make sure that we are adhering to the state training guidelines. And then that goes up to a larger work group made up of many of us from throughout the And that is the completion of my overview. There's probably a lot more I could get into, but I just wanted to give you an overview of kind of what training does, but, what my roles and responsibilities are. So also wanted to point out that this format of the PowerPoint, Christine had came up with a template, since we will be doing all these department presentations, we wanted to make sure you guys liked the template, that we were able to hit on all of the topics of how we were funded and what was our impact. So hopefully that works for you guys. Let us know if maybe it doesn't, but I can take any questions that you have.
Not a question, but I'll thank you, Tricia. That was, I think the format was great and really laid everything out that was easy to understand and just very informative and comprehensive. So thank you so much, and kudos to all the training and work that you do. I know I've heard very positive feedback from folks that have attended such training. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Tricia? Okay, we will then move on to our 2021 Annual Plan Survey with Dr. Lawson.
Thanks, Dr. Guadalupe. And I'm having some internet connectivity issues, so I'm going to keep my video off, if that's okay with the board. That seems to stabilize my connection just a little bit. So this is the time of year for us to talk about the annual needs assessment, which, as I'm sure you all know, is what drives our annual plan and every three years, our strategic plan. But last year, and even early into this year, I heard a lot of feedback from the board just about wanting to see increased board involvement and that the, the board really wants to feel like they're a part of this process. So before going into the draft of the survey, I would like to propose just some changes to the process. So in prior years, the survey and the annual plan were sent to the board in a less formal manner, and I'm just proposing that we formalize this a bit in that the survey in and of itself, I'd like to obviously present tonight, but would like some in-depth guidance and some direction in terms of any changes that the board would like to see, edits, additions, deletions, and then certainly would like to take it for formal approval at the meeting later this month. I know that this is a quick turnaround for this year, and we could certainly look at expanding that a little bit next year to give the board some more time for review, especially since we'll be in a strategic planning cycle. But again, we're, we're in a bit of a time crunch, but I'm hoping we can still make it work for this cycle. So if we can go to the next slide after we have the survey, that gives me about six to eight weeks to get the survey out. Christine Burke will be posting it on our website. We asked the county and other community partners to also post it. But then I'll go around and attend as many virtual and in-person meetings as I possibly can with clubhouses and drop-ins and providers, and anyone who will have me essentially come to their meeting and look for some input. And I'd like to then compile and analyze all of that data once we have it. And then ultimately, if we can go to slide four, I'd like to present the data analysis at another study session. Ideally, that would be in July, and then that would allow us to, at the study session, review and analyze the data and, in partnership, develop a draft plan, or at least draft strategic priorities that I can then put into a plan. We can take it back then and show it to the board at the August Committee of the Whole for any further refinement or input. Typically, we present the draft plan publicly in August, and then we still have the September Committee of the Whole to share any additional public input or feedback we've had, and for the board to take one last look so that when we come to you in September and ask you to approve the plan, you're, you're very comfortable and you feel confident in doing so. So with that, I just wanted to pause to see if there is any thought around maybe changing this process up, if you like it, if you don't, or if you're okay with kind of me proceeding in that fashion as we develop the survey and the annual plan.
I have a couple of questions for you, Nicole.
Sure.
That's okay. How many times does a person who's being served, or actually anyone in public, do they have a chance to complete the survey? Is there a limit on how many times?
No, someone technically, because we'll just, it's a link to a form. So we don't limit someone from completing it more than once.
Okay. And would it help if we had people completing it more often, you know, throughout a year rather than just coming into the spring season? Just so we have more data points and a better balance of how they feel services are meeting their needs?
I mean, that's something we could explore, and we could look at going into the next fiscal year. I also know that we have a bunch of other surveys that we send out. So like, for instance, when we put this survey together, we considered the fact that we did a full survey around transportation just a couple of months ago. We did a full survey around person and family center and planning. So we didn't want to be too repetitive or have people too tired of taking our surveys that they don't want to give us the input anymore either. So it's just that balance of, you know, trying to get as much information as we can without overwhelming folks. I will say, though, that we do take all of those additional surveys that we do in any given year, and we fold that data into the ultimate analysis that we use to drive the plan.
That's what would have been my next question. Do we use that as inputs? The answer is yes.
Yes.
For all the other feeds. Okay, that's good. I'm wondering, the other question I have is, do we have a roughed-in plan of some things or initiatives we were thinking about for this coming year, even though, and then we would tweak it based on the feedback of, or the consolidation of all the plans?
Yes, we do. So we're in the, headed into the third year of our three-year strategic planning cycle. So our FY21 plan, the rough-in, would be the three-year strategic plan we did. So we're going off of those strategic goals. We're also then feeding off of the FY19 and FY20 annual plans. But you'll see, when we get into the survey, we also included some questions related to COVID-19 and the COVID-19 response, because we know that's becoming our new normal, and we wanted to get feedback from the people we support as well as our providers, just in terms of how we're dealing with that as a system. So we don't want to ask people to wait for a three-year strategic planning cycle for us to develop a plan or a goal around something, but certainly the overarching annual plan is driven by that strategic plan.
Okay. And, and I'm glad you brought that up about COVID-19. You know, there, there's that, the telehealth, the need, the needs of our folks to be connected to our, our society versus being housed away, if you will. I think all those things are beneficial. I think this has just brought, brought those kind of issues to light just because of the limitations of, you know, of, of being connected in the community. So I'm glad that, I'm, I'm unhappy about COVID-19, but I'm glad it's caused a stimuli of having us take a long, hard look at how do we improve that connected community, if you will.
Yeah. Yep, and I almost forgot, too, in response to your question, Jonathan, we do have the Tell Us link on our website, so it might not be these formal questions that we develop for the assessment every year, but we do have that general link for folks to give us feedback, and that's also compiled into the annual plan.
Okay. And that was sort of my way of asking and advertising that we have lots of ways for people to give us feedback any day or night. So thanks.
Hi, I had a quick question, too. Plus, I, I think this is great. I really appreciate you including us and really think you've got some great ideas going here. So just regarding how many people are you anticipating, or how many surveys is your goal to, you know, get filled out?
We try to push them out as much as we can throughout the year, and I have asked Christine Burke to help me out, since this is my first year doing this. She typically sends those out, and Christine, can you help me with what our typical response and return rate is on those?
Sure. So our best year, which is really from a percentage-wise, has been 600, between 500 responses. Usually, I think last year we were down a little bit, but I have found that when we do multiple surveys throughout the year, or too many surveys close to this needs assessment, we will have less of a response. But we do push the needs assessment out for three months, email it routinely, we keep it on our website, we post it on social media, and then we also ask the Oakland County Health Division to send it out on their lists.
So in addition to that, Hadas, that was part of my listening tour that I had mentioned as well, so that if people aren't necessarily comfortable filling out the, the survey in and of itself, I will go around to as many groups as possible and talk about the overarching areas of the survey and try to get feedback that way, just so that we're having as many different perspectives, perspectives as we can, leading into the planning cycle.
Sure. And just because we do have, what, at least 100 providers, is that an accurate number?
Well, that's around, our residential provider networks are around 100, and then we also have our core providers and vocational providers.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, isn't there any way we can really push them and say we would like at least two, you know, from you, a piece?
Yep. I mean, the thing- Yep. I mean, the thing to remember there too is that everyone served by a residential provider is also served by a core provider. And so it's not, there's a lot of overlap in terms of the wraparound supports that go out. But we will definitely be asking them to assist folks, especially, you know, with telehealth, if you can share screens or help people from that perspective as well.
Sure, great. All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Nicole, this is Malkaya. I was really excited when I saw this in the packet. I really appreciate you being timely in the turnaround, because we just had these discussions, I think it was about two or three weeks ago. And I think that it's ambitious on your part, but I think it's doable, and I really feel that the board needs an opportunity to have more hands-on input at the beginning of the planning process and not so much a rubber stamp at the end. So I really thank you and appreciate you for doing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Malkaya. Okay, it looks like Adam and Pat are in favor as well. So I am going to just kind of continue forward. And so for the rest of the presentation this evening, I'd like to go through the survey and certainly would like to hear any feedback or changes you would like, but also understand that I am asking for kind of a quick turnaround, because I'll be looking for your approval at the full board meeting later this month. So we'll go through it tonight. We'll certainly be taking notes in terms of your feedback and your responses. But if you wanted to send additional, I would just ask that we have them by close of business on Thursday so that we have time to make adjustments before the board meeting on Tuesday. So with that, this is the first slide that's been up, and that's just the introduction that we have, going over our mission, vision, values, and asking people to please participate in the survey. So if we can go to the next slide. Go to the next slide. So this is again, just some more of the introduction, and then we have our general questions. So just looking for an overview of who it is that's taking the survey, but I will pause and see if any of the board members have feedback on this particular slide or these questions. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. Some more general questions, just trying to again, understand what type of services the person or their loved ones would receive. And you can see at the bottom right corner, it says "person served." We will have branching in the survey, so if I said I was a core provider, I wouldn't receive this question. But if I said I was someone who was receiving services, I would. Next slide, please. So here, just looking for different areas that we have heard in the past related to things that are important to the people that we support, and just asking them, again, just to kind of rank those areas. And next slide. And here, again, we've got the assisted technology. So again, with just the telehealth, if they need devices or things like that. And the next slide. And please let me know if I'm moving too fast. I'm trying to pause to let everybody have a chance to read through it, but I'm also trying to not let you get bored by sitting on a slide for too long. So again, we know that direct support professionals are really important, and supporting that network is incredibly important. So we have developed a few questions specific for people we support about their experience. And that's just the relationship, the level of support that they receive, and then, of course, always being treated with dignity and respect. The next slide. And here's what we added specific to telehealth in the COVID-19 crisis. So wanting to understand who received telehealth services, how they feel their experience with that, and whether or not they would like them to continue. And next slide. So this, you notice in the lower right-hand corner would be for a family member. And again, just those same topic areas, but trying to rake importance based on a family member's perspective.
So I had a little question about this one.
Yep.
What if someone wrote yes for all of them? Would you want them to maybe prioritize? What, you know, they could think that everything was yes, but then how do you, you know, if we have limited funding, do you want them to prioritize to help what's most important to them?
So I guess, from the past experience, we have a few folks who might say yes on everything. I don't think that's been traditionally our response, and Christine can certainly speak up if I'm wrong. But I also think that that's where the discussions that we have in terms of going out and being at citizens advisory committees and sitting and talking with folks at clubhouses and drop-ins and other venues help us to prioritize that as well.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next slide. And again, the same, same services, but just from a family member's perspective. There's also been some times where we have found a family member's perspective is not necessarily the same perspective as the person who's receiving the support. So it's always interesting to us too, to kind of better understand the audience and the different perspectives. I see Judy typed in a question. Is there a way going forward for those within our network or support system who know the people we serve well to talk with them to get feedback for the plan too? And that she likes the timeline. I think that that's a good idea, Judy, and something worth exploring, definitely. Again, I don't know that that's traditionally how it's been done, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's how we have to do things moving forward. Okay, can we go to the next slide? And again, the same question. So I'm sorry, I don't mean to be repetitive, but it does branch out. So we just wanted to make sure that you were able to see all of the different questions that any person taking the survey might see. And next slide. And again, this is a direct support professional questions for a family member or an ally. And then the age range of the family member or the person supported. Just again, to help us understand what's important and to whom, so that we can better think about how we might want to strategically target programs or different supports and services. And next slide. And then we added some questions related to our own access staff, just to check in and see what the satisfaction is like and how we're doing. So we wanted to know how long it was after someone was approved for services before they were connected to a core provider agency. And this would go both to the person served and their family member. And I see Pat asked the question, how do you solicit survey input from direct support professionals? We would ask them to fill it out as a provider as well. So you can see some of these are community member-only questions. If you look in the lower right-hand corner of the one that's up right now, community member, and then we have the provider questions that will come up as well. Sarah, would it make sense, instead of 41+, to include a 65+ to get an idea of older populations? I do agree that that might make sense, especially with our knowledge that we are the fastest aging county or one of the fastest aging counties in the country. So that's a really good suggestion. And what about the actual, so the actual direct support professionals could also fill this out, to your question, Pat.
Nicole, will you be sent directly to them, or do you do it through the provider? I guess that's really my question is.
Oh, well, this will be, it'll be on our website. The surveys are anonymous. And so the providers will certainly have them, but we advertise them and we ask that the people we support fill them out. So the actual worker in the home supporting the person would also know it's out there and be welcome to complete it.
How will you get the word out to people besides just having to sit on the website? What's the proactive communication?
So there again, going out and getting into the community and talking to people, getting their feedback face-to-face, letting them know that it's online, and Christine also sends it out with the same channels that we send out our newsletter, which goes right to people's emails and all of the other communication venues that we would. The county puts it out. So we try to get it out as far and wide as we possibly can.
Nicole, if I could add, Pat, in addition to giving it, the survey and needs assessment to our providers, we do have 40-something members who belong to a PR marketing group within our network, so they distribute it. But we mail hard copies of the needs assessment to all specialized residential service sites and with prepaid postage, and they return the envelopes to us. So that's one way we try to make extra effort to reach direct support professionals as well as individuals living in those specialized residential service sites.
Okay, that's good, Christine. I think you answered my question. I wanted to make sure it was going to get directly to the people in addition to the, you know, provider management team, but actually to the people doing the hands-on work, because they're going to give you a real hands-on input.
Thank you. Thanks, Christine. So going back to the slide, this would be a community member and just looking at, trying to gauge people's knowledge about whether or not folks know the different types of services that are available through OCHN. And next slide. And how important are the following services? So we had areas, which would be like life areas, and these are specific services that are offered through our network. Next slide. And again, from the person served perspective, their relationship with a direct support professional. Next slide. I think we have some double slides in here. Let's go ahead and move forward. Yep, he's got in there double, so. Move forward again, please. And next. And there we go. There we go. So these are questions about just people's knowledge regarding the Office of Recipient Rights, whether or not they know we have one, and whether or not they know how to file a complaint, and that will go out to everyone who takes the survey. Next slide. And then looking for possible barriers that would stop anyone from filing a rights complaint, just to make sure people feel comfortable and supported. So Adam asked, what about an option for peer-provided services? Did we miss that in the one about the services that were important? Let's see. Sorry, I'm scrolling back through. We did miss that, so that's good input. Adam, thank you. We can add a question about if peer-provided services in those important questions, so people can rank that. And a question from Eric, do we send these surveys out to the Oakland County school districts? I'm going to defer that one to Christine. I don't know that we target the schools specifically, or that we have in the past.
We actually do send the survey to our local schools, and we send the survey to faith-based organizations as well. So we target counselors in the schools and school leadership.
Thanks, Christine. So similar to the recipient rights question, we just have one about customer services, making sure that people know we have a customer services department, that they know how to contact them if needed. And then just asking, if you contacted them, did they respond to your concern? And again, that would go to, out to everyone. And Malkaya has the question on the slide for barriers about recipient rights. How do they fill that page out? That'll be a text box where they'll be able to type in any of their responses related to that. And Pat said it might be helpful to include customer services phone number and email on the survey. I'm sure we can work that in at some point in the survey. So this next question, again, looking for input across the board from everyone in terms of how people think we should focus our time and our funding, and looking at the following topics and rating how important they are to someone. And just to circle back around, these are all areas that are in the three-year strategic plan, which is how we kind of came up with the topic areas on this slide. Okay, let's go to the next slide. And looking just for feedback again to everyone about our response to the COVID-19 crisis, and in terms of communication, supplying personal protective equipment, sharing resources, and transitioning to telehealth services. Can we also include microenterprises? I think you're talking about the slide before, correct, Malkaya? Around the where should we add our time and our funding? Okay, yep, I don't see why we can't add that. Do you think microenterprises? Do you think employment to go like broader? Just wondering your thoughts on that.
Yes, thank you, Nicole. I do think it needs to go broader, because not everyone is suited for employment. But we have had several people come before the board and talk about the businesses that they've developed. So I think we do need to put some energy in supporting people that we serve, if that's the direction that they'd like to take.
Okay, so we can add the broader term employment, but we can include like a definition that certainly includes microenterprises. Would that kind of hit to what you're suggesting?
Yes, as long as people can see that that's an option, because I don't think enough people know that that is an option.
Okay. Okay, if we can advance the next.
Thank you.
Sure thing. If we can advance to the next slide. So then we have an entire section regarding diversity and inclusion. And so we are asking people if they would divulge their sexual orientation. This is something that we don't currently collect in our demographic information for the people we serve. So again, the survey is anonymous, and this would not be a required, because we have the "I prefer not to answer." So we're certainly not looking to force anybody into disclosing anything they're uncomfortable with. But we do think it's important that we start collecting this information so we can be as supportive across the board to everyone we serve. And next slide. And an age range. And next slide. So just looking for race or ethnicity. Judy asked a question. Individuals in their own homes, should there be a question asking if they received PPE? Well, we know who we distributed PPE to, so I'm just trying to think that one out loud. Because we're looking for their feedback on our response.
Exactly. I think that's kind of the point. It's a hard one to articulate, but I think that, did people understand that they could be safe as well, not just their direct support providers, professionals? That, to me, that seems part of how well we did our job, that we made individuals feel safe too.
Sure, I'm scrolling up because I think, so we could go up to, if we can go back to slide 13 really quick, just to address that question. I think we could add it into the COVID-19 response that's specific to the person served.
I think that's where it belongs, looking at that now, yeah.
Okay.
But I do think that, you know, did they But I do think that, you know, did they feel connected to safety and health in a different way too, you know?
Sure, so I think we can add a couple questions, because you just kind of triggered something else in my own head for me Judy. One is my ability to stay safe with PPE, but the other one would be my ability to stay connected with my family, my friends, and my loved ones, right?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, so we can add those two then, toward that slide.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. All right, so if we can skip back, let's see, to the diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we were looking general, we had race and ethnicity, and then for individuals of Latino or Hispanic ethnicity. And we're also then looking to break out Asian ethnicity as well. Again, just to better understand the people and the families that we're serving. So next slide. Looking for people to rate their agreement, just with the following statements. And this information we would use to help inform our trainings on things like implicit or unconscious bias, as well as microaggression. And next slide. And again, just rating agreement on the following statements. Next slide. And this also goes to everyone, and it's just people's opinion on are we focusing on addressing diversity, inclusion, and cultural competency from the perspective of all the folks taking the survey. Next slide. And this is, these are now advocacy questions, so moving beyond the diversity and inclusion questions. These have traditionally been asked over the years, and it's just wondering where people get most of their information around advocacy initiatives, so we can help to identify gaps, but also then to target information to where we know it'll get into the hands of people. Next slide. And asking people how they want to receive information. So what's the easiest and the best way for folks to get what they want from us in terms of advocacy or other info? Next slide. And then just reminding everybody that we did have a person-centered planning, a technology and transportation surveys, but just in case for whatever reason someone wasn't able to take it, there would be a space for comments or questions or any other concerns, just so that those areas are still addressed. And so with that, then we move into questions. And Judy had asked about how long do you think it would take an individual to complete this survey? When I went through as a person served for the first time, it took me about ten-ish minutes. And for a family member or a general community member, it was, I don't know, maybe about five to seven minutes when I tried it.
Okay, my concern was survey fatigue.
Yes, yeah, well, and in all fairness, I had seen the questions too, right? So, you know, it might be closer to twelve or thirteen minutes, just depending on someone's comfort level with taking the survey.
Yeah, that's a reasonable amount of time, thank you.
Okay. So, oh, did somebody else have something?
No, I was just going to call, it was Sarah. I just wanted to make sure no one had any more comments or questions for you.
So again, if folks want to take a look at it, as long as I have your comments by close of business on Thursday, what we will do is we're going to take all the comments and wonderful feedback we received tonight, we're going to add those into another version of this, and I'll seek formal board approval then at our meeting in May.
Thank you so much, that was great.
Thank you.
Lots of work you put into that, so thank you.
It's Malkaya, I just wanted to thank you again, Nicole, for taking my concerns to heart and giving us a quick turnaround on that. I feel like it's vitally important for the board to be involved in this process, and I really appreciate your efforts on that, on our behalf. Thank you.
I agree, thank you so much Malkaya.
All right, thanks again. And we will move in now to other business, and our discussion is regarding the board calendar. So Judy, do you want to jump in, or you want me to give a synopsis?
I, I'll start, please fill in any blanks I might have left. I'm trying to make this as streamlined as possible, it's kind of got a few moving parts, so hopefully I'll do okay, and obviously questions are welcome. What I'm looking for at this point in time is a motion to change our current calendar so that we can accommodate the final round of the search. And the suggestion is that we use our current May board meeting date and time and change that to a special board meeting for the final round of interviews and the vote on the new CEO. And in doing that, I'm also suggesting that we move the May board meeting, the regular board meeting, to the date that is currently set aside for the May study session. To back up a little bit, in terms of the May nineteenth meeting, I've been assured that Blair and the candidates are available at that time, so that's one piece of information I'm sure that is useful to you. And on the, moving the May board meeting to the twenty-eighth, there are no timing issues, there, in terms of action items, we won't be delaying anything important. Everything that we need to vote on can be done May twenty-eighth and keep our usual order of business going forward. So the only thing I would offer on the May twenty-eighth date, the change, is that the study sessions start at five, and I don't know if people would prefer to use six o'clock as the regular board meeting time. That's a piece of discussion that, you know, I'd be very interested in hearing. But the point, at this point in time, is to revise our calendar to allow the special board meeting on May nineteenth instead of our currently scheduled regular board meeting, and to have our regular board meeting at the time era on the date, and we can talk about the time of the May study session. And the motion would be to make those changes.
Is there any comments from any of the board members?
I think that's a good idea. I'll move to make that motion and let you fill in the blanks with what Judy just said.
Second?
Okay, so motion by Pat and seconded by Dr. Taub.
I, now that there's a motion in play, I have a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
Are we planning on keeping the same six o'clock time for that meeting? Do we have an agenda of how we'd have the special meeting for the interview portion and then the voting?
We will, by the time, we're working through those details currently, in terms of what the agenda, but there will be an agenda available prior to the special board meeting. Does that answer your question? As to whether or not, the six o'clock time worked for the candidates and Blair.
Okay.
And there is the issue of what time to start the regular board meeting if we move it to May twenty-eighth, if we want to keep it five the way this study session is, or if we want to make it six to make it more consistent with our regular board time.
Okay.
Are you thinking starting at six is too late Jonathan, or just right?
No, no, it's, I want to make sure that we have ample time for the rest of the board to be able to ask any questions they have of the candidates. I also wondered, I know that part of the process Blair had communicated would be that the selection committee, and that's not the official name of us, or maybe it is, we would be making a recommendation of one and then of the primary and secondary candidates, but I wondered how that fits in this process too.
That's one of the things we're going to, I think, clarify.
Okay.
The intent is to have that information well in advance of the Tuesday meeting though.
Okay, because I know it's next week, that's, but today's only Monday. All right, those are my questions for clarity, that's all. And I, and I would not, I would not have an issue with moving the study sessions, which would be now the pseudo-regular board meeting, I would not have an issue with that one staying at five or moving to six or whatever would be the board's will. As part of this motion.
I would like to have the specifics in the motion, so if there's additional discussion about a start time for the board meeting after it's moved to the twenty-eighth, I'd be really interested in hearing them.
Yeah, I have a comment. On the CEO search, which would be Tuesday the nineteenth, I, just from being on the search committee, I can't see, I know how long it took us to interview the candidates, and you're going to have twelve people doing it, so minus the five of us who are on the search committee, you're going to have seven people with questions and listening to presentations, and then after we get the two presentations, then voting on it, I don't see how we can do that in two hours. So perhaps, perhaps we should make the CEO search five day and leave the study session board meeting fixed day.
I think that's a good idea, because if we start at five and it goes over a little bit, we're not going until late, late hours of the night.
I, I.
Friendly amendment to the motion?
Jonathan, go ahead, Jonathan.
Well, I would make that, or I would clarify that motion to make that covered. My concern is we haven't got clearance that the three candidates would be available starting at five.
We do have that, there are two candidates, Blair.
I'm sorry.
And the two candidates are available that evening. And I don't think five or six is, you know, anything that will cause an issue.
Okay, so I will like, I will make the friendly amendment that we make the start of next Tuesday's special meeting to begin at 5:00 PM, to run scheduled till eight or later if necessary. That the following week's study session now be renamed to the May board meeting to run starting at five o'clock as normally, because of the calendar.
Pat, are you okay with accepting that friendly amendment?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to read special board meeting five o'clock, May nineteen, and the new date for the board meeting, May twenty-eighth at 5:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
Sheila, take a roll?
Yes, roll call please. Are there any other questions? Hey Sheila, thank you.
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Looks like he might not be in here Sheila.
Okay. Mr. Lindemeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Landsman?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Dr. Hans, she's still on?
I knew she had come.
She left.
Dr. Taub?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Ms. Summers?
Yes.
Thank you. Sheila, can you make sure that Edna has that information? I don't know if she's still on, so she can forward it to Blair.
I'm still on, and I am typing as we speak.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Don't expect votes all the time at committee of the whole, but this was a worthy exception. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And so now we will move to our second opportunity for public comment tonight, so I will turn it over to Christine to see if there is any public comment.
We had two public comments submitted through chat, and just want to remind everyone that we are handling virtual public comment in the same way we do face-to-face, where we will read it to the board, and then customer services will provide a response at a later date. The first individual did not provide a name, I believe it is a special residential service provider, and the question is, the fifteen percent added to some pay rates doesn't tie out to two dollars, what do we do in these cases? So I will pass that on to Mike, and I'm sure he will work with budget and finance. The second public comment is from Pam Casper. Her comment says regarding persons served to have Medicaid and Medicare, they are told to go to a hospital emergency room, not common ground. Are there issues with hospitals notifying core provider agencies when a person served is hospitalized in a psychiatric unit or with discharge planning? If the hospital is not contracted with OCHN, does cause challenges with complications? I believe that is all we have in terms of public comment, and we will pass those on to Mike. We did not receive any public comment through the online forum.
Okay, thank you Christine. So now we will move to board member comments, and maybe Sheila, if you could just call off names randomly and we'll go around that way, please.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you Sheila, and thank you staff. I was very, very, very impressed with the work that went into this meeting packet. It's very comprehensive. You're demonstrating, again, your desire to be a dance partner with us, as I said in the interview process, to make sure that we are dancing to the same music and dancing the two-step and doing it well. So I just want everybody to know, I appreciate you so much, your willingness to work with us to make sure we get what we need to make the decisions that we have to make. So thank you so much, it was a very, very good meeting, very comprehensive, thank you so much.
All right, about that. Dr. Taub?
Okay, we're, everybody's getting used to the great, awesome job that our staff is doing. The job is normally emotionally draining, and with the COVID-19, it makes it even more so, and everybody just stepped up late and is doing it really well, and it can't be said enough times, so thank you everybody.
Dr. Hans, oh, she's already up for the day. Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, I'll go with the other one, other folks have said that I think the staff is doing a yeoman's job. I really appreciate the work that Nicole reviewed there on the survey, because it sounds, it seems incredibly comprehensive but important to get the input from everybody, and her willingness to reach out and participate with various constituencies to get input, so we do this right. And I think the, what was it, the prevention, can't think of the name of it, but I thought that report was well done. And I apologize a little bit to Anya, because I think I came out a little strong about the budget, but boy, it's frustrating not to be able to put our fingers on it and see what's going on. But, but I'll get better, I'm understanding that we're dealing with a bureaucracy called a state government. Hopefully we can get that better going forward, not from our way, but from their way. But I thank everyone else, from all the input you did, I know everybody's working hard and under this situation, we're dealing with COVID-19, it makes even more difficult, so appreciate everything everyone's doing.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. Pat, I just want to tell you, it is our role to provide fiduciary oversight and keep asking the hard questions. So, and Anya as well continues in her team, and Patrick, I wanted to say something, congratulations, Patrick, on making some of this building stuff happening, so I really appreciate it. But yes, the financial team is really working at trying to see, how do we, how do we bend the system, how do we stretch it, and how do we maximize the delivery of funds to improve the services and supports we provide, so I think that's great. The surveys that are coming out, the plan going to next year, ask The surveys that are coming out, the plan going to next year asks the very key question, what else could we or should we be doing? And I, to help the people we serve to have better lives. And I think that that's an awesome question. I'm hoping that down in the future, we'll be able to look at, roll up our sleeves and understand better the outcomes measures we have in place and the kinds of other outcomes measures we can implement that helps better demonstrate, helps better reflect what the needs are of our folks and demonstrates that we are doing a good job, but also where we can improve. So that's it on my comments today, again, thank you. And also to the committee that's done the selection for the finalist candidates. I know I'm on it, but I wanted to say thank you in public to all the rest of you. Pat, Steve, Sarah, Malkaya, for doing a bang up job, not only in asking the questions we already had, but the follow-up questions and really getting some insight into our candidates. So thank you.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes, thank you for all of the information in today's presentation. I'm really looking forward to seeing the results of the survey. I think it's so important that you, you guys provide those surveys to all of your members. Again, as a provider, I do the same thing because I think the feedback given during things like that is so valuable to being able to make improvements and really finding out the needs of your members. So I'm really looking forward to that. And it was really good to see how some of the trainings that Tricia had discussed are going to be moving forward as well.
Mr. Lindemeyer?
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Bernard?
I want to thank everybody, the staff is doing a terrific job. It's so challenging right now. And I also want to thank Edna and the rest of the board members so much for moving along the CEO search process in this difficult time. So thank you so much and congratulations for Sarah for chairing the meeting, doing a really great job. So thank you so much, bye-bye.
Just to echo what other people said, thank you so very much to all of the staff at OCHN and all of the providers in the network as well, just doing the best to serve everybody that needs our assistance within. Not only, not only OCHN.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Okay, sorry Adam, are you done Adam? You cut out a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Guadalupe?
I will just echo the sentiments of everyone else. Thanks for the great presentations tonight, all of the hard work that the staff are doing at this time. It's much appreciated and including you Sheila for getting everything ready for us. And just everything's been very well organized and well prepared and I appreciate it. A thank you to the search committee team as well. It's been, I think, very difficult for us and we think everyone, difficult in trying to make the decisions and ask the right questions so that we can make sure that we've got the best person in place. And just a thank you to the candidates that we were able to interview. I think everyone's been, been great and it will be a tough decision when we all make that next week. So thanks for everyone's time and effort in that, thank you.
And Ms. Summers?
Best part about going last is that everybody's already said all the right things. So I just appreciate that our board and staff continues to keep the people we serve at the forefront of all our decisions and concerns and discussions. That feels really good and it's the right way to go forward. I thought the template for the presentation on training was really good, well thought out. And the content was also great. And the work on the survey was remarkable. And I think we're going to get a lot more information than we might have had in the past. So I look forward to an even more informative annual plan and budget when we go forward. And I thank you all, the search committee, you did a great job. I got to watch, but you did the heavy lifting and I couldn't be more appreciative of your efforts. So thanks.
Alright, with that being said, I hope everyone has a great evening and the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night staff, thank you.
Good night.